...to order, this is the Oregon City Commission. And tonight is Wednesday, May the 6th. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
I'm James Nacita, City Commissioner.
Dr. Neely, City Commissioner.
Please join me in the flag salute, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you all know, I'm certain, this is Oregon's 150th birthday and we have a sesquicentennial moment, which is a moment where we will share something unique or interesting about Oregon City. And you'll see, we have a little bouquet of flowers here on the dais. And I would like to read a proclamation from 1956. Whereas the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce has conducted a poll to determine the official flower for Oregon City, and were asked more than 800 persons marked ballots in this poll, resulting in the choice of the iris as the favorite. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Commission of Oregon City that the iris be, and it is hereby named as the official flower of Oregon City. So, I would like to also thank Forte Floral Design for donating the irises, the official flower, for enjoyment this evening.
What year is that?
This is 1956, and that was a time when the Commission had three people on it. The mayor was called Mayor Commissioner, and it was Mayor Richard Long, Commissioner George Helsner, and Commissioner Peter, a name I can't read, Lors or Sors or something like that.
Lors.
Lors, I'm not sure. So, if you want your name read in posterity, write more legibly.
That counts me out.
Anyway, that's our official flower, so do enjoy that. Next, as part of the 150th celebration in Oregon City, we are in the middle of a community food drive, and this is the proclamation. Whereas in Oregon, whereas in the United States, 11.7 million children live in households where people have to skip meals or eat less to make ends meet, that means 1 in 10 households in the United States are living with hunger or at risk of hunger. And whereas last year in Oregon, the Oregon Food Bank delivered over 57 million pounds of food to low-income people in Oregon, and another 15 million to programs serving low-income people through 915 local programs. And whereas 36% of household members receiving an emergency food box were under the age of 17, and 50% of households were homes with children. And whereas the Oregon City Hope Program, Helping Other People Eat, was founded in 1988 as part of the Oregon Food Bank network, with several churches in Oregon City sharing in the work of feeding the hungry of the community. And whereas Hope volunteers put in more than 400 hours a month collecting food, stocking shelves, and packing food boxes, so that families and individuals in need can come to a Hope pantry once a month to receive a nutritionally balanced three-day supply of food. And whereas, the Hope Program feeds about 700 families each month through five Oregon City churches that host Hope during the week. And whereas, the number of people who need food has overwhelmed the existing food supplies in Oregon City. And whereas, 16% of the food donated in Oregon comes from food drives. And whereas, Oregon City's 150th Task Force has embraced the food drive as an important community service for Oregon's sesquicentennial year, believing that no one in our community should go hungry. Now therefore, I, Alice Norris, Mayor of Oregon City, do hereby proclaim, April 27th through May 18th, as Oregon City's second annual food drive, sponsored by the Oregon City United Methodist Church, to fill the pantries at all five Hope churches. And I urge all citizens to drop off food in barrels located throughout the city, including City Hall and the library, to replenish the supplies of food so severely needed by people in our community. And just so you remember, here are some symbols of food. And I believe our food barrel in City Hall's already been dumped a couple of times, so people are knowing to bring donations here, and that's great. Secondly, we have another important activity in the month of May. It's an annual event, and that is, we give out a preservation award because May is Historic Preservation Month. And our, first of all, this is the proclamation. Whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas, "This Place Matters" is the theme for National Preservation Month 2009, co-sponsored by the City of Oregon City and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now, therefore, I, Alice Norris, Mayor of the City of Oregon City, do proclaim May 2009 as National Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Oregon City to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. And then, because it's Historic Preservation Month, we get to give an award. We first gave this, we created this in 2007 to recognize, I think, the mother of historic preservation in Oregon, certainly in Oregon City, Ruth Powers, Ruth McBride Powers. She preserved Amesworth House, Rose Farm, McCarver House, and the Irma Tinker House in Oregon City. And most people believe that without her efforts, we might not have those four homes today. And so this award was created to recognize historical efforts in Oregon City. And this year, the Historic Review Board is where the recognition is generated. And the Historic Review Board has voted unanimously to recognize someone who has served for eight years on Historic Review Board, who served as chair for four of them, and that would be our very own Rick Winterhalter. Rick, would you come forward? And I would like to read what nice things one of your Historic Review Board members said about you. "I enjoyed serving on the board for many years with Rick. His dedication to historic preservation and the countless hours he spent preparing for meetings, documenting the historic fabric of our neighborhoods, and his dedication to educating the public were above and beyond what any citizen volunteer would be expected to do. Because of these efforts, numerous buildings and building elements have been preserved within Oregon City." Those nice words were said by Todd Island, a local architect and Historic Review Board member.
Thank you very much, sir.
So, Rick, thank you for your dedication.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You deserve it.
I'd just like to say, I'd also like to thank Rick as a former member of the Historic Review Board, particularly for helping train me to be a dissenter.
Great. I would like to invite Christina Robinson Gardner up to the microphone here, who's coming up with Don Slack from Main Street, to talk about a special project for Preservation Month.
Thank you, Mayor Norris. I'm here with Don Slack, Main Street, Oregon City, the Historic Review Board, and the Community Development Department of Oregon City are sponsoring "This Place Matters" program. Like the national program, we are, and Oregon City are adopting that "This Place Matters", and I don't know if I can get the right camera, but nationally, you can go on the National Trust website and tell the world and the nation why your place matters to you. You hold up the sign, find the building or the area that you're passionate about, and you can write a paragraph or two words why it's important. We in Oregon City are also encouraging people to write in to Main Street and myself why your place matters to you. Cypress Restaurant has donated a $25 gift certificate, and we're giving away the gift certificate to the most inspirational story. And we'll be collecting these pictures and stories, and they'll be available online, and they'll be also available throughout the year at different public venues. So we're really encouraging everybody in the community to tell us why your place matters. And you can get access to the "This Place Matters" placard and more information, how you can email your photo on the city's news section, and also on the front page of the Planning Division website, www.orcity.org.
Great. Thank you very much. That would be fun. And lastly, we normally don't have three proclamations, but we have three important things this month, so I will proclaim. Whereas, on October 1st, 1962, the 87th Congress of the United States of America by joint resolution declared May 15th as Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 15th as Law Enforcement Week, such a resolution signed by our 35th President John F. Kennedy. And whereas, in 2008, the officers of the Oregon City Police Department responded to over 28,000 calls for public safety services from the citizens of Oregon City. And whereas, the City of Oregon City is proud to honor its police officers, who on a daily basis place their own safety and well-being jeopardy protecting our community. And whereas, in America, a law enforcement officer is killed every 53 hours, making it the deadliest profession in our country. And whereas, the City of Oregon City joins the rest of the nation in commemorating the memories of more than 18,662 deceased officers, including 162 from Oregon, who have given their lives in the performance of their duties of protecting our citizens. And whereas, in remembrance of Officer George J. Hanlon of the Oregon City Police Department, who made the ultimate sacrifice on April 23rd, 1906, while fulfilling his duty to protect our city, now therefore, I, Alice Norris, Mayor of the City of Oregon City, hereby proclaim the week of May 10th through 16th, this week, as Law Enforcement Week. And hereby also proclaim, May 15th, 2009, as Law Enforcement Memorial Day. So done. Yes, Commissioner Neely.
Appropriate for the one proclamation, which I have to go back to to find it, but dealing with the history of the Oregon City, the Preservation Month proclamation. May 9th is a celebration of the 100th anniversary of the McLaughlin Memorial Association. That was the organization whole, and I think we'll have a citizen's comment about that.
Should we let her lead that?
I will defer to that, but...
Thank you for introducing the citizen comment portion of our agenda.
I can introduce her if you want me to.
Would you?
Yes, thank you.
Sure, please.
Well, that's your name. Ms. Marge Harding.
You have many personas.
Is, I think, going to make an announcement about that.
Not Mary Todd Lincoln tonight. My name is Marge Harding, and I'm representing the Irma Tinker House, McLaughlin, excuse me, McLaughlin House, Stevens Crawford House, Family Festival, anything else that you can think of, coming up this weekend. I would like to invite everyone to come this weekend, and incidentally, apparently the weather that we ordered is going to arrive.
Did you order rain?
No, no, no.
Oh, I just want to know what you ordered.
It was very special weather, some that we don't usually see around here, but very special weather. But it's going to be a very, very special weekend for Oregon City. So many things are happening. There is the Family Festival, Fun Fest at the Clackamas River area, Teddy Bear Parade Saturday morning. Saturday afternoon, the Stevens Crawford House, the Irma Tinker House are going to be open. The Irma Tinker House has a special Mother's Day display. But the very special, special event happening on Saturday, of course, is the McLaughlin Memorial Association's 100th Birthday Celebration. Our Mayor, Alice Norris, is going to be there with a welcome, but we also have our very special guest, Congresswoman Darlene Houli, who is going to be presented with a memento for appreciation for what she did in preserving and helping the McLaughlin House become part of the National Park Service. There's going to be the regimental band, refreshments, and then on top of this, the Oregon City Heritage Coordinating Committee was able to rent the trolley for the day, and is going to go from Clackamas Park up to the different sites and make a loop and go on back, so that hopefully many, many people will come and join in and share in the celebration of our heritage and our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Teddy Bear Parade, 10 o'clock, then Clackamas Park, and McLaughlin House at 1:00.
At 1:00, their celebration is from 1:00 to 3:00, and so there's going to be a lot of things going back to back. I do also need to mention that we just got these new brochures. They are the History and Roses Tour. That is the official tours put on by the Rose Festival Association. Oregon City is included in it this year, the McLaughlin, Barclay, Irma Tinker, and Rose Farm.
Great. Thank you very much. Lots of events happening. Okay, time to get to business. Let's look at the agenda. Is there, first of all, anything that needs to be moved forward or pulled out of the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Not for my part.
Okay. Seeing none, we will take the agenda in the order then in which it is listed. The first thing we have is a resolution under public hearings to adopt a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2008, 2009, the current year. Dave Wimmer, our Finance Director, you have the staff report. Dave, there you are.
A couple weeks ago, when we had the, you guys approved the, some budget changes, I said there were some that were of the third kind that needed to have a public hearing, and they were larger than the others. Anyway, we have two of those tonight, and you'll probably wonder why you're even considering these, but it's because the percentage of change is that great. Anyway, the first one has to do with the schools' excise tax. This was our first year into it. We, I think we just threw $40,000 in there thinking it wouldn't have that much activity, but it's had quite a bit, and so I'm increasing it by 140,000, which we'll have 180,000. This is all in and all out, except for our 1% that we get to keep. But 180 is probably more than we need, but this gives us plenty of room. And the second item has to do with the Parks SDC Fund. Last year about this time, we were getting really involved with the John Storm Park, and then to purchase the oak, Glen Oak property. But unfortunately, we hadn't budgeted for 2007, '08, and they never really occurred because of various weather and various other things until the first part of 2008, '09. So this is just moving the appropriation forward to the next, to this year. And those are the only two items. It requires a public hearing also.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions before I open the public hearing? Commissioner Neely.
Yes, I got a question. Could you explain to us the role the city plays specifically in the excise tax, schools' districts' excise tax?
Well, we just collect it, but since we collected it, it's revenue for us, and we turned around and remit 99% of it to the schools. We have to keep 1% admin fee, but since it's coming, going through our books, it leaves an impression, and it's a budgetary item.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no further questions, then I will open the public hearing. Has anyone come to testify on this particular budget item or this particular resolution? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, is there a motion for adoption of this supplemental budget?
Move to approve Resolution Number 911.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nacita. Seeing no further comment, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes, 3-0. The next item on the agenda is a motion, requires a motion for continuance for a vacation of sections of Caulfield Place, tract 3. This, his staff has recommended, and the developer to move this to May 20th. We have a motion for continuance, please.
So move.
Sir?
Moved by Commissioner Nacita, seconded by Commissioner Neely for continuance. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes, 3-0. Next, we move into general business, and the first is an opportunity for our Police Department to go after some grant funding, and that is the 2009 Recovery Act, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, properly called the JAG program. Who's going to present that?
I.
Oh, there you are. Didn't see you move in. Hi, Chief.
Mayor Norris and City Commissioners, the Police Department has been notified of our eligibility to receive a grant through the Edward Byrne Recovery Act. It's actually the 2009 Recovery Act, it's an Edward Byrne grant, which provides the city $36,858. And this money is, has to be spent on equipment, can't be spent on personnel, so it has to be spent on equipment. We're awarded the sum based on population and crime rate, and it's predetermined by DOJ. The Police Department is planning on using the money to spend on three speed measuring devices, some laser units, and also eight new 800 megahertz radios, which upgrade our current equipment that we have, adds a few more channels and better encryption on it. And that's what we're planning to use the money on.
Great. Congratulations on that opportunity, but it requires that we also review it, this is the public review that it is required?
The public review is done at the Chiefs Advisory Group on April 21st, and it was unanimously approved by the Chiefs Advisory Group.
But we also have to approve it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have a motion for approval, please.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Nacita.
Is this laser radar unit going to increase the likelihood that I'm going to get a speeding ticket?
I hope so. Is there some reason you should be worried?
I'm trying to be diplomatic in my response.
There's a way you could decrease the likelihood that you're going to have a speeding ticket.
We have programs for people like you. Did you wish then to follow up?
Sure, no, I'll make a question. I move that we approve the proposed use of $36,858 in federal justice assistance grant monies that the Police Department can apply for to purchase equipment for patrol officers.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nacita, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes, 3-0. Now, we hope you're that successful with the cops grant.
I do too, hopefully, but we'll know by September.
Yay, okay. Next, we have a request for the city to pay annexation application fees. Dan Drantlaw, our Community Development Director, will have the staff report. Dan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commission members. I believe at your last hearing, the Bowers came to you and were concerned about the fact that back in 2001, when the city initiated a citywide island annexation process, for some reason, their small parcel was passed by. And they are wishing to have their piece annexed into the city, and they've further asked for several fees to be paid by the city. And I'll go ahead and summarize those fees. There are four different fees. One is the normal application fee that goes to the Planning Department for $3,898. Then there's a metro mapping fee, assuming the annexation's approved, of $150. There's the Clackamas County election cost at $1,250. And that, actually, that cost can vary depending on what other ballot issues are presented, but if we put that on a mayor November election, when there are going to probably be more items on the ballot, that figure would likely be around that number. And then the tri-county annexation fee, which is $500, that's a total budget impact of $5,798. Following, on your second sheet, you'll see a map of the property owned by the Bowers. It's located not too far from Beaver Creek, between Myers Road and Glen Oak Road. And as you can see from the map, it is surrounded on all sides by Oregon City. Now normally, if we didn't have a charter requirements for voter annexation on every piece of property, the ORS would allow a simpler process. But because of our charter requirements, we have to take this to the voters, and that's part of the reason why these costs are relatively high. And again, this is just a request for the city to pay those fees.
And Madam Mayor, the reason we're recommending that we pay these is, this appears to have been an oversight when we did those other annexations, that this piece of property got left out.
In 2001. Okay. My question is, I'm not positive what you're asking this for. This is not the annexation request.
No, this is just how the city pay the fees.
Just a fee request.
Yep.
And so later on, we'll get an annexation request, and it may be for the November 2010, 2010.
Correct. We're going to have to go through the full process. That's Planning Commission, City Commission.
Just fees, thank you.
Election, yep.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Neely?
I want to look at these fees individually. Actually, the metro mapping fee, this is a fee that the city would pay for the mapping.
Correct, to metro.
Yeah, to metro. The Clackamas County election and city processing costs, that's the cost for the ballot.
Mm-hmm.
And that has to be paid. And the tri-city annexation cost is, is that specifically associated with city services? No, it's not. It's for the tri-city sewer services.
Right.
For discussion purposes, I have no problem waiving the application fee to the city. That's the greatest item. The others are costs that we actually pay to other jurisdictions. And I'd like the Commission to consider waiving the application fee to the city, but not those other costs. I appreciate the situation. They came before us, and I think I basically voiced support. But I presume there are other interests that they have in the annexation. Most, all of the testimony we heard from, as I recall, we heard from property owners at the time of the island annexations were opposed to it. Now, this doesn't mean all people that were annexed in the islands were necessarily opposed to it, but that's where we heard the comments from. I guess that's basically my statement. I would waive the application fee to the city.
I want to point out, we're not waiving. We'll be paying these fees.
No, I understand that, but these are fees that are internal to the city as opposed to going outside to a different jurisdiction.
Right, but this will actually involve money coming from contingency going on.
Yes, I understand that.
So, what you're suggesting is that we would pay $38.98?
Yes.
And applicants would pay with the $150, the $12.50, and the $500?
Part of the logic also on the city processing cost, as Mr. Drantlaw has mentioned, it has to do with the number of measures. If this was held at probably a November date, or, well, I should say, a date that we have congressional elections or primaries and so forth, there would be so many items on those ballots that the cost would be very nil. So it's kind of a choice that they're making to do it in what you could call a special election. We got the, we got the school board decides to have its vote at this time, but for the most part, we don't have many items. So that's kind of a choice on their part in terms of which election they wanted the annexation to go forward on.
Didn't you cross it out on the mayor November 2010?
I'm sorry?
Was that when it's going?
Didn't you cross it out on the mayor November 2010?
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, we were, yeah, we were sitting.
It's already crossed it out on the low-cost elections. Yeah, otherwise it would be way higher.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Excuse me.
Right. Commissioner Nacita?
Just wondering on the metro mapping fee, is this a cost of generating some maps?
It's just administrative cost of, we sent, basically sending information to Metro, and they just update their maps. It's an administrative fee.
So it's not something that we can do in-house and...
No, it's something Metro does to their database.
Given that this was an error on the part of the city, I don't know if I'm comfortable assigning the election cost to the folks. I would, the $150 and $500 might be chargeable as something that anybody might pay, but as far as the election costs, I don't know if I'm comfortable charging that to the applicant.
Can I clarify, the tri-city cost, that must be because they're on a well? Or why, that is, I mean, a subject tank?
It's got to be added into that district. It's not in there now.
Well, are we all...
They aren't.
They aren't. The city is.
Oh, because they're not a city.
Anytime we annex property, it's the same.
But anyone would pay that regardless.
Anytime there's an annexation, you have to pay the fee to also get into the tri-city district, right?
That's a charge they would pay irrespective of whether the city made an error.
Only on annexation.
Yeah.
Comes along with annexation.
And similarly, the mapping fee seems to be something that anybody would pay. But the annexation application fee and the election fees, I think it's more appropriate that we pay those.
I have no objection.
I agree with that. Would you like to make that motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I move that the city shall pay the annexation application fee and Clackamas County election and processing costs for the annexation of a property identified as Clackamas County map 3S-2E-9DD, tax lot 3400. Second. The property owner shall be responsible for costs associating with providing documentation, title, history, and legal descriptions.
Thank you.
I suggest also that you have an end of the November 2010 election, so if they don't use it by that time, so.
Okay. By reference, I incorporate Mr. Sullivan's suggestion into my motion.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Is there further comment or discussion? Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes three zero. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Neely on the consent agenda. Nancy, please poll us.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes three zero. Next, we move to communications. Ooh, we're not going to, we're not going to be here long enough for Commissioner Smith to clean up the commission chambers. Mr. Patterson, you have the-
Were there police officers present that can let them in?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Patterson, it's your communications time.
I've always thought that when someone utters something like the meeting is going to be over, it's a kiss of death for the meeting.
I know, I know. I'm sorry, I take that back.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Sullivan to talk with you about the Whitkey case.
Okay.
I think the commission's aware that the city got a favorable result and a judgment against Lowell Whitkey in a subdivision case where some roads were not done correctly. In our view, we sued, we got judgment to recover those monies. To say that the post-judgment proceedings were Byzantine and unusual is to understate it. Mr. Whitkey, among other things, has discharged a couple of sets of attorneys. He has contended before the circuit court that he was not aware of what he was doing or didn't do in assenting to certain things. And he has appealed the judgment against him. We've given you some communications evaluating that appeal. Suffice it to say, we don't think there's an awful lot there, but the appeal is filed. I understand that the appeal has been filed by an insurance company attorney with a reservation of right. The issue is that we've been given another settlement offer, which I detailed in a memorandum that went to you, which we believe is inadequate and which was made essentially $10,000 in fees ago. We do not suggest taking the offer, but we need you to give us the direction. The appeal has been filed, nothing really has to be done right now to respond to the appeal. However, there is some probable need to find out the nature of Mr. Whitkey's assets. And again, in the memo that we prepared for you, we suggest that we find out where those assets are and whether or not they are available to respond to the judgment. That's basically it. I've been careful about how I've framed things, but the issue for you is, do you want to take the settlement offer or not?
May I ask about the memo? That wasn't this evening?
I have not gotten a memo.
Mr. Patterson has it.
Oh, there we go, okay. I was thinking it was the only one.
I was passing that out, may I ask a question? You mentioned the insurance company and with right, what does that mean?
A reservation of right means that we'll decide later if we don't prevail, whether or not we'll pay the judgment.
You need a decision.
The insurance company as opposed to the?
I'm not sure that the insurance company is liable for the judgment, they aren't either. So, the issue is whether or not they want to appeal and take their chances on an appeal and then make a separate decision about whether or not if they lose, they pay.
Versus the?
Mr. Whitkey pays.
Mr. Whitkey, okay, thank you.
I can wait if you want, unless you have other questions.
Commissioner Nocita?
I'm just wondering, I mean, I'd like to be able to reflect on the memo.
Sure.
I mean, can this be tabled to the next city commission meeting?
Probably. The only issue, and it's not really pressing, is whether we should proceed with the judgment debtor exam to find out where his assets are.
That might be time sensitive.
I think we should do that in any case.
Okay, let's wait to the memo, yeah, I can do that. Why don't you wait till the memo comes in, you can give your answer.
Okay, you want to continue then?
Just one other item, just want to indicate that we are going to be conducting interviews for the elaborate director's position, that scheduled for?
May 21st.
May 21st. We have six candidates, there will be a meet and greet section our time as well, so everyone will get to meet those candidates and chat with them as well, so.
What time is it?
We'll get that whole schedule, I'll tell you, we don't have it all put together right now.
May 21st.
Thursday.
A lot of things on that night.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. There are reports from commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Neely?
The, I was, I served as the representative of impact as the alternate the last time. A great deal of the meeting was taken up with issues that ultimately relate to our urban growth boundary, excuse me, urban reserve discussion and so forth. But there was this joint impact, J-PAC meeting, which various things-
Three meetings.
Three meetings? There were three meetings in any case, in which basically the, I guess you would call them goals or objectives in terms of growth, issues were discussed. This was supposed to be discussed within an hour of the meeting. There were a total of, I think, eight, no, six, there were six major topics. The whole hour was spent on the first one. The decision of impact was in fact to hold a retreat to go through these particular items, so at one point or another, you will find that there's a retreat. It's kind of interesting, the discussion really focuses, I think, on different philosophies that exist among the counties in the metro region. And most of the discussion tended to break that way. Those of you that attended, when we had our joint work session here with the planning commission and ourselves, and we looked at maps dealing with the Clackamas County's potential areas for consideration for urban reserves and rural reserves, somebody might have noticed if they looked at the Washington County side, that almost the whole of the county is slated for study areas for rural reserves and almost all of the counties slated for study for urban reserves. There's almost no distinction in those maps, whereas in fact, there's a great distinction in the Clackamas, in the Clackamas maps. Anyway, that's probably where that retreat will be held, is to probably wrestle with those particular issues. There was a meeting that I didn't attend of the Clackamas County Commissioners Policy Advisory Committee on Urban and Rural Reserves because I was tied up in one of our budget committee meetings.
As was your alternate, I assume.
That's true, my alternate was so tied up in those meetings. Their focus at that time, however, was looking at the requirements for the rural reserves. Their next topic, which will be at the end of this month, will be on rural, on urban reserves. And I presume our non-unanimous consensus on what would go forward from the city will be available to the county for that particular meeting.
I've actually sent the map that you saw to the county, they have, both Metro and the county have the map that we worked off of at a work session.
Okay.
And the regional reserves meeting is next Wednesday, a week from today, so I'm sure we're looking at some of the same materials. Jim, do you have any?
I do, actually, I have, I have two reports.
Okay.
Well, actually, they're not reports, they're more comments and discussion. The first is a big, big, big thank you to everybody who was involved with the Earth Day Solve cleanup on Saturday, the 18th. I had, I was the team leader for the promenade and it was just an extremely enjoyable day, both down at Clackamas Park, attacking a very intense blackberry and scotch broom bramble on the promenade adjacent to the VFW hall. We got through about a little over half of it and people were high-fiving each other. And it was, I mean, as far as, you know, having a tangible positive benefit on your community, there was just nothing like it. So, I'd like to commend everybody, and particularly Nancy Bush, who we met with several times and just kept everything so meticulously on task during the preparations for that cleanup. And she's actually, even before the day was over, was talking about bringing the trailer up to the promenade again for a promenade-only continuation with the neighbors on the promenade. And I'm looking forward to that and inviting, inviting my neighbors with door hangers, et cetera, for that. So, again, thank you to all, I really enjoyed that experience.
I believe there were 140 people who were signed up.
Yeah, it was, it was a great day. Secondly, I indicated in emails that I wanted to discuss an issue that I've been learning more and more about over the past few days, which is something called the ordinary high-watermark for the folks at home. And in the audience, what that is, is a jurisdictional line under the various environmental statutes, most specifically the Clean Water Act, which is determined through field studies and below which the federal government has jurisdiction on certain activities such as fill and removal. And there have, some citizens brought to my attention a discrepancy in the ordinary high-watermark that the Army Corps has established at the mouth of the Clackamas River as opposed to what it has been delineated at, at various points upstream of the mouth of the Clackamas River, including the Clackamas Cove. And I have to admit that digging into this, I have found it like grabbing at air. It's a very ambiguous and amorphous line. There is something called a jurisdictional delineation that I understand from emails, the consultant Pacific Habitat Services, which is the consultant for our Cove developers' Pacific Property Search, is going to be seeking, according to one of the emails I saw today and forwarded on to the rest of the commission. So, hopefully that will give something more than air to grab onto if the Corps actually does work with Mr. Van Stauber and establish a definitive line around the Clackamas Cove for our activities there. In considering all of this, I actually took a walk around the Cove and as typically happens to me when I undertake these types of investigations, I usually have more new questions generated than I get answers to the previous questions I've been pursuing. And what I have, the question I want to pose to the commission and staff, and this is another directional thing, is the Clackamas River Patrol that the county sheriff has established a station there, at their station, they have some metal pylons that through a former industrial use are sticking out of the water. On that, they've painted various river heights that you can see where the water is and see what level the river's at, or at least in the Cove. The number that had been bandied about up till now had been 18 feet for the Cove development, or the Cove area. And what I saw when I was there was that at the 18-foot level, if you project that onto the shoreline around the Cove, there is a substantial, substantial amount of vegetation even below the 18-foot level. There's, what I saw was willow trees emerging out of the water along the shoreline, black cottonwoods, very tall black cottonwoods whose stumps were growing at the point that was within the 18-foot ordinary high-watermark projection. So, I have a new question that, again, this has led me to, is, given that's within the jurisdictional area of the Army Corps and other agencies, below the 18-foot high-watermark line, whatever the jurisdictional delineation, whether it's 17 or 20, you know, at the end of this process, it seems to me from the site visit that at whatever level it comes to, there's a lot of stuff below that line. And the question now is, for me, is, do we have to apply for a permit for what is within that jurisdictional line irrespective of what the jurisdictional delineation eventually comes out to, again, whether it be 17, 18, 20, 22 feet? And I was hoping Ms. Kershaw would be here to help with that discussion, but I did want to pose that to Mr. Patterson and Mr. Drinlaw, if you have any insights on that. On the Cove development plans, I see a lot of work projected in our design drawings that would be within the, even the 18-foot ordinary high-watermark, including a canoe launch, storm drain, outfall, flow spreaders, docks, et cetera. And I'm wondering what the discussion has been in the process of these land use proceedings as to that question of what we would require of ourselves or what would be required of us.
My understanding was that the elevation that was established, which I believe was 18 feet, that if there was no development below that line, then it wasn't jurisdictional in terms of the Corps review. And in the last memo I saw, I guess the, some number of 25 was thrown around and then I saw a number of 20, so I guess, I mean, if it's a topic you want to explore some more, I'd probably want to meet with the Corps and see where they're at and it's something we could, I guess, talk about at a work session if you wanted.
And I had some correspondence on the same subject with Mr. Darrell, Mr. Tyler this week. They met actually with the representative of the Corps, Mr. Holm, on the 4th and they walked that. According to the, Mr. Darrell, is that Mr. Holm confirmed that they had marked that appropriately and also confirmed, again, as Mr. Drinlaw indicates, that there is not a jurisdictional issue. Supposedly, there is some documentation on that visit coming, I think we'll need to look at that and determine what the next step is depending on that. A lot of this may be academic because there may or may not be a project and so, you know, until we really know whether we're going forward, I think it's really a question of how much time and energy do we spend if there's not a project. But let us get that information from the Corps based on that walk around and then we'll take a look at it.
Could you clarify what you mean, that there's not a jurisdictional issue?
As Mr. Drinlaw says, as long as the work is not below that line, supposedly, that is not a, something that has to be permitted through the Corps.
If I ask my question though, because what's on the drawing? What's on the engineering drawings of the Cove Plan Set?
There is clearly work going on below 18 feet. Clearly work going on below 18, including like the outfalls, the, you know, the flow spreaders, the docks, the canoe launch. I don't know- I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what the discussion is between Mr. Holm and Mr. Darrell and Mr. Tyler was. And, you know, that, but from what I, you know, as a professional planner see on this, I can't imagine that there is not work being done below the 18-foot ordinary high-watermark.
The other thing to remember is that the review, the site plan review, the more detailed review was only for the first two phases, which didn't include any of the things you're talking about.
Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, I, and that, what you're saying may be true, but I know there's going to be probably a fair amount of cut and fill to meet the objections of that one particular project. And whether that cut in fact occurred below the, below whatever line delineation, I think your statement is though that if it is in fact below that line, then we would seek a permit. I mean, they would, the developer would have to seek a permit.
Let's get the documentation from the Corps here. It's supposed to be in the next few days, so then we can take a look.
Okay. Can I suggest that we place this question as an agenda item on the next city commission meeting? Because I'd like Commissioner West and Commissioner Smith to be in on this discussion as well.
Well, the work session's next week. Why don't we do, if we can get the information together? Could be on the work session.
For the whole urban renewal.
Yeah.
That's fine.
You mean for the city commission work session?
I meant city commission, but we also have, that's next week, next Tuesday, right? And then we have the urban renewal commission retreat.
Okay.
And then we have our city commission. So, it could be one of those three.
So, we have a work session next week?
Mm-hmm.
Could we invite an agency person to that city commission meeting?
Well, why don't we allow the staff to?
Let's find out. I have no problem inviting an agency person at one point, but let's find out what, what they're going to get through correspondence.
Did you hear the request?
I'll pick that up off our video stream.
Okay.
The only question, I'm debating whether this is a city commission issue or an urban renewal agency issue and?
It, I think it depends, I think it depends on what was approved out of the planning commission. If the city commission had to review that, then, chose to review that, then it could. But I would prefer it come before our, perhaps our work, urban renewal joint, wow, it's her.
Retreat.
Retreat.
And we'd all have an understanding of the term, terminology and the?
I just don't want to leave anybody behind in the discussion.
No, 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 I think it's important, it's important that they're involved. However, the city commission itself may, may itself have to become involved in the issue itself.
Depending on what, what the issue is, pretty well, we need to go with it.
Okay, okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. There is no more business to come before us?
Just the Whitkey thing?
Oh, yes, that's right.
That's right.
Well, we talked about delay, so we have a chance to look at this.
Yeah, I think the question before him that he posed just for take action is to explore whether there are assets available. And I think we ought to do that.
He said, he said you could do that without?
And he wants a direction.
I just wanted to get your direction.
Yeah, I think, I think we should give him that direction.
I agree.
I agree.
And then you can look at it and discuss it at the next meeting.
At the next meeting. Okay, thank you very much. And if there, with no further business, we adjourn.